You have in front of you a copy, this is something that John Pandolfo started in Berry about six, eight months ago, and he told me the idea back in June, that all the board chairs and the principals, in case the superintendent isn't around, it's not that I would have this all on top of my head either, have a copy of open meeting law in front of them, laminated. So if there's a question about process for the board, you have it in front of you. You can just keep that with you in your... And the second sheet has the seven exemptions for why you would go into an executive session.
Got it.
Okay? So just keep it in the binder if you need it. You've got it, and you can use that in your motions for stating why you would go into executive session.
I think our board chair should have that memorized, and we should give him... You want to give me a test?
Yeah.
A proficiency test.
No, no, that's just a little cruel. That's why we gave the handouts. I thought when John told me that in June, I was like...
I think, to be fair, if you really want to go down that road, every board member should know all of those.
Yeah.
So, just wanted to... Trying to, when I hear the ways to support the board better, I try to do it.
I'm just saying.
Well, you could decree that, yeah.
Yeah. No, I think this is a good idea, actually.
Yeah, it's John's idea. I want to give all credit to our credits due. I think it was a great idea by Mr. Pandolfo.
Best practice since.
By an East Montpelier resident that he is.
Yes, he is.
Okay. We are at the consent agenda. 2.1 approved minutes of 6/18, 6/13, 18, 6/14, 18, and 8/2, 18. Start on page two.
I would make a motion to accept the minutes of June 6, June 13, June 14, and August 2 as a sleep.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion of the minutes as presented?
I was not at the 6:14 meeting. Does it matter? I was going to abstain on just that one, but...
It does not matter.
It doesn't matter. I can just...
You can always approve minutes even though you're not there.
Okay. I did read them, so...
I'm not seeing or hearing any discussion. All of those in favor of approving them as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thanks. Discussion agenda Act 46.
We had our meeting on the state board of education, and you guys probably read articles on the paper. So far, they look favorable. As far as the meeting, when Scott, Matt, and myself presented to a pretty full room, Bill was there in support too, to a pretty full room of their capacity is 100, and they had to ask some people to leave from other towns so that we could all be there. All of the, you know, I don't know, I didn't see the list, but, you know, most of the people are similar to our last, pretty sixth meeting, but there were a lot more people than before. I think when I felt like we were well represented, we went back and forth over the weeks on what to say and who to go first and what to do. John Brainbut did a video, happy to, for you guys. Also, Orca has a video if you guys are curious about that. And now, in essence, so I gave, I started. I originally didn't want to start because I wanted Matt as the chair to start, but we went back and forth, back and forth. And I mostly just said, you know, more about, you know, trying to appeal to their humanity kind of thing. And then Scott and Matt were more concentrated on the debt issue. John and Ansel was there too, and we handed the chair original letter, the one she submitted to them, and not just in our, you know, in all the town's behalf. We, you know, we gave them the, we submitted the written response that everybody had approved. And as far as, I don't know, I felt it went, I felt it went well. I felt it went well. I'm who are always asking people to watch their behavior, you know, like what they put. I had a little bit of a hard time on, because Scott and I had sort of rehearsed, and we all had gone through what they were going to say, and Scott came to the meeting without his page, but a different blue note. So he started, he started really, really good, and then towards the end, it was just, you know, it was a little, it was a little hard, but, you know, it's just, it's the nature of being in a meeting. I just, I mostly read because I didn't want to get a course. But I think if you've read the articles, it seems like both Dan French and John Carr, they were both listed.
I know who you mean. I can't think of his last name, especially.
John Carr, I think, yeah. And I did, he asked us a very interesting question, and I originally felt like we didn't totally respond it right. Matt did good responding, but we didn't, he was asking what was the difference between that first district that, that he presented and us, and, you know, they also had debt issues. And it was, you know, it was good. We were able to talk to him a little bit after the meeting.
So one of the other presenters had a similar situation?
Yeah, the first one.
So the past two board meetings, I'm sure they'll do the third. They brought in districts that emerged. And so there was a comparison between Addison Central and Washington Central. And, you know, they had some...
Between us and Addison Central?
Addison Central around, no, around Middlebury. Very similar, I would say. And I think that was the right, I think that was the right characteristic. I think they are, I think we, actually, I know, because Peter and I have talked about what they've gone through and what their debt loads were and all that.
It is very similar.
It's almost, it's uncanny how similar it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But what was different from, what is different from them is that they didn't even have, so they have had to do more of the systems. So we have some of the systems in place, right? That we have, everybody has the same, uses the same computers. Everybody, in theory, we're all into one common five-year, we have a little booklet. So that we're not like completely on the same page, but they hadn't, they didn't have that at all yet. So it's, it has been a little bit easier for Peter now.
So what's farther along the road of cooperating and collaborating maybe than they were?
Yeah. So, and one thing that I think Matt used to write quote, and it was on the paper too, is that sometimes people can eat, you know, you can have all the systems you want, but people can also eat systems away, right? So if you don't have that buy-in, and, and, because we were trying to make our case. So regardless of how East Montpelier felt, I feel like we tried to separate ourselves a little bit and say, you know, this is, please approve our alternative, right?
I mean, I think ultimately, that's, that's the rub, right? Is that there are districts who not only aren't bought in, but are pretty dug in again.
Yes.
So, and we've done a lot of work to bridge those gaps. So the danger is that if we get glommed together, then all of that goodwill will go away. And it'll end up being negative traction.
Everybody in their corner again, digging for him. But, maybe not, but, you know. So we are pretty much at their mercy right now. So I don't, I just want to ask, you know, what, what we think the next steps are.
Can I merge the executive committee report with this? So the executive committee met last week. So we've taken two steps. One, we've authorized the board chair and the superintendent to outreach to Twinfield to begin discussions with them about the possibility of, to initiate discussions about merger with Twinfield. And it's, so it's, it's a preliminary, just to lay the groundwork. So if they're interested, we can have discussions about, is that something we want to do or not? They bring, was it 150 high school students?
500 A D M.
So it could, it could make a significant impact if we added 150 students to U 32.
Because they would look at Twinfield now not as a...
They've already told us in a meeting that they would be willing, they're not willing, they're willing to talk about changing their structure. They told us that last...
They're willing to consider sending their high school students here.
They told us that. They said, we're even willing to talk about closing our high school.
I just find it interesting, we, six schools, can't come together. How we bring some as a...
I know, that's just, I'm trying to get...
We have a...
Well, let me, let me finish with what the executive committee's doing. We'll also, we're... Well, Chris McVeigh and I are. We're building a structure to begin discussions on Articles of Agreement. So the impression, there was a general feeling in the executive committee that we're going to merge. So we're, we're going to establish a framework to begin talks on two to three, maybe four Articles of Agreement. Just because this all happens, we'll find out about this the end of November, beginning of December. And if it is to merge, and we've done nothing, wherein, you know, the state gives us the Articles of Agreement, and we've got a month or two to decide if, to propose changes. So...
So we want to pick the most contentious things.
So, well, the question tonight, it's pretty clear, we're going to move in this direction. We'll establish two or three or four committees. I'm thinking it's going to be three. Separate committees, each to work on an Article of Agreement. So it's going to require...
So, I'm sorry, maybe I lost you. Is this talking to Twinfield?
No.
Or this is because...
This is within our HCSU. So for instance, the one I brought up, I said, I think it would be prudent, I wasn't looking for more, I was looking for one, that we should start having a discussion on Articles of Agreement around debt. Because in, in one of the meetings Janet was at, she suggested there were ways that we could potentially get a little creative around the debt. In the executive committee, it was debt, governance, and there were one or two others that came up.
School closure was the other one.
School closure were the four. So the executive committees have all been asked to go back to the board meetings this month. And considering those three or, I mean, those four, or if there was another one, but debt, governance, school closure.
Yeah, I mean, what would the local boards like, or say the most critical Articles of Agreement?
The most critical and prioritized. So if we were going to work on one Article of Agreement, what would it be? If we were going to work on three, what would they be? And what would be our first choice, our second choice, and our third choice? So that I can bring that back to the executive committee to help frame what we're going to put in place. So I know I'm kind of monopolizing some time, but is there any thought on two or three articles? And what would be the most important?
I think debt's what I've always thrown out through this whole thing.
But I don't think that's our concern necessarily. We already have the debt.
Yeah, no, it's us, but we're the ones that are blamed in the public as we don't want to pay East Montpelier's debt.
Understood.
I think, at least for me, the most important would be governance and trying to bring, because we, there's a lot of people that have, are heavily invested in the other boards and know more about the debt. And we already, like, if we initiated that, we already are, who are seeing us, you know, keep sort of imposing this and blaming to that. So I, I think if, if we, I don't know how we're going to structure that, but one thing that we talked through, at least through the 706B, and could help us with the community engagement and the local control and governance is to, to look more in detail to community, to the councils that we were talking about having in school, to try to get that buy-in. I think that we would, there were a lot of people really interested in that, and that could help move forward our governance structure.
So that's another fear of not having a voice if you're on the small school.
Yeah, and it's something important for, for the schools. And some other districts, well, some other people that have been involved in the Act 46 are now kind of going backwards to trying to create them because they see the need. So if we, but that's just my...
I would agree that governance, I mean, at the end of the day, this is a governance change. So the thing in my mind that presents the most opportunity and danger is the governance change. What does the oversight look like? How do we preserve what we're doing in this building that we know works? That may not be the same as some of the other schools in the district? How do we, how, and I understand that that's also a double-edged sword, right? If you make too much room for individuality, then you end up with one board, one budget, and everybody doing what they've been doing right along, which may not always be best practice. So designing that structure by which those decisions, whether they're curricular or operational, and making sure that the community has a clear understanding of how to engage their local folks. And all of those, I think, are really important pieces to this.
And I would assume that we, we would be doing this parallel to talking to Twinfield in, in two ways. If we would consolidate, or if they would, you know, change the structure, keep their own board. You know, like, we can't like totally say we're just, you know, like giving them both options, but depending on what...
But depending on what our structure looks like?
Yeah, depending where we end.
Yeah. It's too early to suggest anything, I would say, on Twinfield. Twinfield is about beginning a discussion.
Yeah.
And I don't think, I don't mean to presume anything. It, it's about opening some communications. So there's no idea where that's going to go.
Yeah, but what I mean is that opening that communication and giving them both possibilities, right? Because we don't know yet what, where are we going to end.
Understood. I think they understand that.
Yeah.
The, at the executive committee level, and Bill, you can chime in if you want to add, I think debt and school closure were the two big ones. And I think, actually, the, of the executive committee members, of which governance was a major concern for them, they expressed a bigger concern over school closure. I think what the executive committee was thinking is, where, where are the biggest pockets of resistance in the communities? And if, if there could be, if the communities could see an Article of Agreement on debt that seemed fair, then there are a lot of people who are opposed because of debt. And there are a lot of people who are opposed, you can hear it from some of the community members, well, we don't want our school closed. They think that's what's going to happen. So there are Articles of Agreement that address that. And then I think governance was another one that was discussed. Is anyone thinking other than those three? And can there be flexibility? I mean, do we, are we hard and fast that one of them is number one?
I think they're all, was there on the list?
So I'll say, governance, school closure, and debt were the three.
Yeah. Yeah, for me, it would be that order, personally.
Yeah, for me too.
I'll bring that forward. So the, the basic thought is there'll be three subcommittees if there's, if all the other boards think three.
We're going to be careful with that. I'm going to tell you that. The boards, you've got, you're going into a heavy negotiations year. Yeah, and I said this to the executive committee. They're, we're going to have to stop doing some things. You don't have the board capacity, you don't have the support capacity, and the personnel that need to support it.
And I think the executive committee understood that.
I think so too, but I just wanted to re-echo that.
This is, this has to be done. Or we're going to be... So that's the executive committee input on Act 46.
Yeah, once you guys have questions, it's...
You know, this Act 46 in the state, has any school gone independent? As in pulled right out of the public school system? Not independent of their district?
No. And that's become harder since North Bend has been pulled out about five years ago.
Well, it was, it was one of the news people talking, that the school was going to go independent. They're already talking about it. And I just was curious if any had, I hadn't seen any in any of this Act 46. I've seen where the Chittenden, East South, whatever it is, where Huntington didn't join the merge in M1, but I hadn't seen where a school proclaims that they are now an independent school.
The last time that happened was North Bannington, and since that time, the legislators made, has made it not impossible, but a lot harder to do.
It seems like it would.
And that was because of costs they didn't want to pay to the supervisory unit in southwest Vermont.
Moving on to 3.2, did we report retrieved?
Interesting part of your report too.
So I don't mind just starting. Bill and I had heard Nathan speak in the spring, and it was pretty clear early on that we felt this would be something great for all of you to hear. So I was just curious, I have my own thoughts, and I had actually typed them all up and shared them with Bill, and he's like, just hold those. And I would, so I would love to hear your thoughts from the day we spent together.
Personally, for me, professionally, not as a board member, it was really good.
Yeah.
Because in my, where I work, they keep talking about the DMG says, the DMG says, and nobody has told me who the DMG is. So I left there very educated as to this report and what's going on, and let administrators in my area know. Perhaps you could have shared some of this information because the report was excellent, and his sharing of it was excellent. I thought, I thought it was very good.
I felt the same way too. I got some input from other board members, really, that they had never heard this before, and very really empowered by the, by the information, and really liked it. I felt like everybody asked really good questions, and...
There was no one backing up.
Yeah.
We're always saying, let's use data to make decisions and do all this, and he had data in Vermont, not just in Colorado or something.
Yeah, and also recognize that there are some things that we're already doing, but that more needs to be done across the schools, that we would all be in the same boat kind of together, so...
I would, I would just, I thought it was good. I would just caution us that a lot of the good stuff he had to say likely means that there would be reductions in other areas in our school. I heard a huge thing on core. And if we're going to do a good job on core, we're going to have to free up some time and resources from non-core areas.
Do less, do it better.
That's the message I'd like you to take away. And I've heard two boards actually talk about doing that, and saying, they finally have started to hear that, what, for you remind me, I say all the time, which is you have to prioritize. And it's not just about prioritizing instruction, you have to prioritize the content areas. And you have to be willing to do that. And I know you get pressure from your community not to do that. But we have to guarantee something to the kids. What are we willing to guarantee?
I really liked the idea of a guarantee. It's, it's a very clear expectation that we can set for every person that walks in the school. And in business, in other board interactions, every time something goes wrong, there's, there's missing expectations. There are expectations that were had that weren't met. It almost always comes back to that. So if we set really clearly out what your expectations as a student, teacher, parent are, then it's going to clearly guide what we do. It's going to clearly guide that work in terms of prioritizing. And it's going to eliminate, well, it will reduce opportunity for expectations and not being met, and misunderstandings. Because we've said very clearly, this is what we are guaranteeing. And then we have to do it.
And a beefed-up after-school program for a lot of the arts and sciences that are, you know, the STEM kinds of things, not that we wouldn't have that in school, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying beefing up to complement the core instruction is important, and having it available is important. I mean, I think we do a pretty good job with community connections and the fact that we have an after-school program, and we have opportunities, but it needs to be more than childcare.
Yeah.
Yes.
It needs to be something that more kids will sign up because there is some, because there is more learning.
But, but how is that funded? Because...
That's a nice question.
Good question.
Community connections is already expensive.
For me, it takes me back to what I said. That cannot be our priority if we like what we heard there. It's core instruction is our priority. And if, if some of the other areas fall by the wayside, or don't get the time, that would be very useful for them and very effective. We, we've only got limited time and resources, and where are we going to spend it? I will say, board members at my group were amazed at how we operate. Because we started talking about prioritizing, and they were like, and I said, well, I said, I'm probably the biggest offender, and maybe administrators don't like me. But I said, at our board, we go, don't bring a budget in over this, and you can't touch these things. And they're like, what? And I said, tier twos are our board baby. You don't touch it. And our administrators know if you've got to cut some money, they're not cutting it from there. And then a discussion was, then as a board member, you need to back that up. And when community members say, well, jeez, you know, that's an important thing, I'd hate to, I don't want to see that go, the board has to say, we think it's important, and we don't want to see it go, but something's got to go, and that's what's going.
And this thing is not going.
Because that's not our top priority. And this is why it's not our top priority.
And we had that conversation not that long ago when we were at U 32, and talking about schedule, and science and social studies have, right? Like, we have already started that here. And also felt the pressure of, we have all these SLOs that we need to, so there's this...
Pushing.
It's definitely not easy to figure out.
And the other thing, I, you know, and with talking that day with Nate and our table, we talked about, yes, if core instruction matters, then that means that we're going to have our priorities, right? Right? So professional development and having that teacher be able to meet 90% or 80% of the student needs also means that we can work and integrate in the curriculum. So reading can be taught, taught through, you know, social studies and science and, you know, like what the teachers have been finding, that there's kids that not necessarily learn, learn reading through your regular, you know, grammar class, but are really excited about science for that, you know? So, so if we are going to really support our teachers, it doesn't totally mean that we're going to lose science and social studies, right? Because they're going to...
That there's something to read about.
So you have to be able to...
It's not just words in isolation, there has to be some comprehension there.
So what he said was differentiation in structure, differentiating in structure.
Yes. Differentiate, differentiation of instruction.
Yeah. So, you know, so math, you know, like, I was just discussing, because Bill and I go around about this, about learning math through music, and, you know, and it just, like, you know, I feel like, yes, we're going to have to give up some things, and maybe there's less time of others, but we have to be able to, knowing our, how our kids' behavior is affected, some kids work better when they're, you know, learning in, in music, you know?
So I'll say this really directly.
Yeah.
Please bring me the research that shows that. Because the meta-analysis from three different researchers, that have done meta-analysis over multiple hundreds of studies, has shown that a highly qualified teacher teaching the subject area is the most powerful thing you can have. So that's why I get, that's why I support that the person teaching math needs to be the math teacher, the highly qualified. Doesn't mean they don't use music, but it's not the music teacher teaching math. It's not the art teacher teaching math.
I don't mean that the art teacher or the music teacher... I, I, I don't mean that the art teacher or the music teacher don't teach math, but that there are certain concepts that you learn in, in music class that is to the advantage of, that supports the math. It reinforces the math, so it opens up. And there, there's kids that don't sit through the math class, but it sits through the music class and can do it, so.
And, and I hear what you're saying, which is that in aggregate.
If you want math to be learned, you have a highly qualified math teacher teaching it.
No question, yes.
And yeah, there's times that you'll have to take that instruction from other places.
Well, and that's, he made clear that the instructor needs to be a qualified instructor.
Yeah.
And not someone else.
Yeah.
In the classroom. We have to make sure we have people who have the content knowledge and the background to teach.
I came away at the risk of sounding a little self-congratulatory about what we do here, feeling really good about what happens at this school.
Thank you.
And, and, and talking with some of the other board members from other schools, you know, he was talking about these best practices and I kept like, yep, we're, we're doing that, or we're piloting that, or we're pretty far down that road, so. Not to say that we have it all figured out, I'm not saying that, but, but it really, it, it was sort of validating that all of these things that we've been talking about and, and anguishing over sometimes, because it really does come down to where do we put the resources? That, that, for me, it felt good to see some really hard research and numbers that supported that what, what we're seeing. So that was, that was one of my big takeaways.
Stephen, can you share what you shared with us at our other meeting? One of you, one of the members in your, in your table said that, do that change your opinion?
One of the opponents of Act forty-six said if they had had this presentation three years ago, it might have yeah, colored their approach differently.
I have a question about the, so highly qualified instructors for, for say math.
Yeah.
Because straight through our school, we have teach, you know, multi-subject area teachers.
Yeah.
Are you talking about, I mean, I know that the conversation has come a couple of times, but are you talking about needing to change that so that we have math teachers and?
So I'm not gonna be particular about the structure. I have an opinion on that. But to be a highly qualified instructor of a content area, you probably need the equivalent of a master's degree. So if you're teaching four content areas, you need four master's degrees.
Which isn't realistic.
Yeah.
I've took.
He said, not me.
I know, but I took what he was saying was a reduction in pair of educators providing instruction in our schools.
For the special education, but I'm saying for.
But I mean, for everyone, we used to have them doing reading interventions in the years.
For tier one, and if you look at the results of East Montpelier, your literacy is close to seventy-five to eighty percent proficient. Pick your measure. You're not there in math. You have a ways to go. And that's no attribute, that's no criticism of any instructor here. The problem is, in the American education system, to get a certificate to teach elementary education, you might have had one course in algebra at the college level. The, the method, the, not even the, take the pedagogy off for a minute, and just the content knowledge alone, with the amount of literacy work, it, it's, it's night and day. So we're already putting ourselves behind, so when you ask my opinion about what I think is best, I would go for specialization as low as you wanna go. Because we need to then provide a lot of training to our teachers and that. And when teachers have made leaps and bounds, when they've been able to focus. It's, to me, it's, it's about the kids, it's about the school, it's about the teachers, it's all about focus. The more things you try to do, the less depth you go. And that's been a criticism of the US education system for years, when we look at it against other nations. We go, we try to generalize way too much, and we try to do way too much. And if you look at the countries that have, you know, it's about your priorities and where you put your resources and effort.
And then my other question would be, a, a statistic that maybe you know or don't know. For programs, maybe not here, but like at the U thirty-two level, are there programs that you would see potentially eliminating or that keep kids in school because that's.
So, a colleague of mine, about ten years ago, said something when they were just becoming a principal and they were in a district that had some severe needs. That was really wanted, had a lot of parents wanting kids to have many different experiences. And he said to them, he told me this story, so I don't know who he really said it to, but I liked what he said. He said, I want your kids to have lots of experiences, but if they're not literate and numerate, literate by third grade, numerate by fourth grade, I just took away a whole bunch of experiences because there were mediation that will have to happen throughout their K twelve career. So I'd rather give that up earlier on, so I can expand their opportunities later on. He's an, he's an elementary principal. And that's the way I think about it. I, I'm right there with Flor and wanting to have kids multiple, multiple, multiple. But once we get past and we start to get that divergence of where kids need to be and where they're performing, the time to catch up is about at least two to one, if not three to one. And every year we go, the gap gets further. So if we don't close it early on, we take away learning opportunities and experiences and choices that kids can have later. And that's what I worry about.
Right, it's basically depth that you're incurring.
And, and there's a huge, there's a huge interest rate on it.
The interest rate.
There's a huge interest rate. So to say, maybe there won't be opportunities at the elementary school? I'd rather say it then than when I have to tell a middle school student, listen, you're gonna lose one or two electives, probably two. And then at high school, we don't have many electives you can take because we need to remediate so much just to get you to graduate.
And short of graduation, I don't, the report, there was just a report out, public TV or public radio, I think, is where I heard it. But I, I've heard the data other places. If you're not literate within your grade level, and I think it's, it's either third or fourth.
Third grade.
Third grade.
Then it, you're, you're very lucky.
So I can.
If you get any success. It's not saying you don't graduate from high school, but to be successful at all is very unlikely.
So I can't give you the general population, because I've been doing a lot of writing on equity and African-Americans in the past six months. For an African-American boy not to be literate by the end of third grade, they have a one in three ch- chance of graduating from high school.
And by literate, you mean?
On grade level.
On grade level.
At third grade, they have a one in three chance of graduating from high school in the United States.
So how can we, you know, we feel like we're kind of supporting the work of the leadership team and trying to be ambassadors, what can we?
You need to put it in policy across the SU that we are gonna make these guarantees, just like Nate suggested. And that we are going to do everything we can, and that may mean not doing some other things to ensure that happens for every student. And I would say numerate by fourth grade. Because right now, the highest correlation to earn any potential is a student's math skill in the United States of any content area. It's not literacy. It's kinda sobering, sorry, but.
No, it's, it's all.
If we wanna attack the.
It was a good counter to my self-congratulatory. Oh, I agree, I was ticking off a lot of things that we did.
If we wanna, if we wanna attack the, the, the equity gap, this is what we do.
Right. No, and I think.
And, and I can tell you, that's been in my experience, in two other SUs, we closed that equity gap.
Yeah.
But we said there are two, we said those two goals right there. And it was, and they didn't write a guarantee and policy, it was just, that's what we're doing. And yes, programs were, programs, some programs fell away.
I, I, I mean, I understand and I agree with what you're saying. I just struggled because I know, like, I know my kids will experience a lot of things outside of here, but I know there are kids that won't and.
But they're gonna experience a lot less if they're not literate and numerate.
I know, so that's what I'm saying, I, I understand what you're saying and I.
I, I feel the same way and.
Right, no, we, what we want for all of the kids is different than what we can provide
Right.
to all of the kids. And that's the piece, for me personally, and it's a challenge for us as a board, is that the fiscal reality is that what we would like to provide, we can't afford to provide.
But we can control nine to three thirty. How much we make a difference?
For a hundred and eighty days, and that's nine percent of the kid's life during their, their pre-K through twelve career. So remember, we only have nine percent of it during school.
That's a short lever.
If you go and do the math.
Really?
Yeah. I challenge.
How you even keep these numbers in your head?
I challenged that this, this spring and May, May, and this, the, my instructor looked at me and goes, get at the board. And I did the math. He said, it's nine percent.
And I think as we.
Counting non-winking hours too.
I'm thinking as we move towards budget, and we've got a little bit of time, but I, I liked the exercise that no one at our table liked. I liked the exercise of, what are we gonna guarantee? What do we guarantee? Cause if we say, this is what we guarantee, that prioritizes everything.
Absolutely.
Cause that, that is the number one priority.
And Cal's did that last week. They said, bring us a budget that guarantees literacy and numeracy to Kat and I. Kat and I were elated, we're like, that's the first time we've heard that from them.
I know I heard some middlesex discussion around their.
Their schedule.
Treasure sugaring, and they started counting minutes and how much literacy and numeracy time was lost doing that event. Not suggesting one way or another, but it started getting them to creatively look at, you're right, there's a cost.
For any opportunity.
To do something, yeah.
Right, and it's not always a fiscal cost. Sometimes it's just a cost in the amount of time that you have to do other things.
It's, and I'll tell you, the, the example from the state where they're talking about mandatory, I, I won't get the term that states use, but diversity training. That takes time, so something isn't gonna get done if that's mandated as a standalone requirement. Something else, we'll have to, there won't be time to do something else if that's done. And it helps if there's a guarantee from our board that we guarantee this, it'd be best across the SU, I think, but this is what we guarantee. I mean, I would suggest, the last two years, we've guaranteed we're gonna have as good a tier-two system as we can have. That's been what our guarantee is. We're gonna, that program is gonna exist and stay.
Hand in hand with professional development. Hand in hand with professional development, cause it always doesn't work.
Yeah, so the teachers are well-invested in the instruction.
And what we're driving at, even though we haven't explicitly laid it out, is we're trying to get the kids literate and numerate. We just haven't said explicitly that, right, we've been coming at it from the achievement side.
No, you've been coming at it from the means. You haven't guaranteed the outcome yet.
Right.
But we're still working on how we're gonna monitor that outcome too, like we are, so. So I think if we, if we, the way you were saying, you know, get one, at least one guarantee that we want, if we want that to have everything, it would be just that, it would be that core instruction, the tier-one. That would have everything else under it or not?
No, I think you say the things you want students to achieve. I don't think you talk about, tell me if I'm wrong, maybe it is the board's role. You know, but it, i- if you don't put the student outcomes somewhere in there, you're missing the goal. Smart goals always have a measurable piece.
Yeah, and I don't mean to like, micromanage what happens, but if we're gonna, we have to put the money in to support the teachers in order to have the outcomes that we want, right, so.
But we're in a pretty good place with.
With that.
Staff.
Professionals providing.
And professional time.
And shifting of people.
If we make a guarantee, then we need to do what we need to do to provide that guarantee. And that provides, that includes staffing and financially supporting it and structurally supporting it and building. It, it requires everything that needs to get done to support that guarantee. You don't have to say, well, and we're gonna do professional development. We're gonna do everything it takes to make that guarantee.
Right, it's, cause it's a hard goal.
It's, it's, there's no wishy-washy, there's no. And this may be a bad example, it's just something off the top of my head. If, if we're suggesting that music is a way that you can improve numeracy, then there will be specific lessons taught in music about math. It won't be a trickle-down effect. It'll be, they'll teach fractions when they're, when they're going over time signatures. But it won't be time signatures, it'll be fractions, and they'll do fraction work in music. And they'll, they'll do work on that, and it'll be mandated that, that, that area does it. No, I mean, we're saying that we're gonna guarantee something, so we're gonna guarantee proficiency in math. That's our focus, and everyone's all in, and it doesn't matter if you're the librarian or the custodian or the, or the PE teacher. All, everyone in the school is gonna be working hand in hand on improving math skills of the students in East Montpelier. And it doesn't have to be that, but if we're gonna make a guarantee, it's all in.
Meeting that guarantee.
It's all in.
Right.
With something that we're using to measure it, not just feels like they know their numbers.
Well, I mean, we're doing pretty reasonable.
The system, that system is there.
Yeah.
The system is there.
And we know that we're not making, like, we know we're not doing it right now, right? So.
So reading by third grade and math by fourth grade, or is that what we're saying?
I'd say during.
During.
Right, this is, this is numerate at grade level in fourth grade and literate at grade level.
I think what you say is that, you say numerate and literate. Task the leadership team to define what that is.
Okay.
And say, we wanna know that it's pretty, it's not hard to do. We're gonna come back as a leadership team and say, this is what we define numerate as, this is what we define literate as. And then you're gonna see evidence of that, and you can decide as a board whether you accept or reject that evidence. Because if you try to get too far down in the weeds, you're gonna pull, we're gonna be here forever. It's a simple statement.
And, and we're not professionals at this.
Right.
So I, I would prefer that we, one of us is, but, but I am definitely not. So that's, I, I feel like our, our job, I know we've talked about this, is sort of to set the pin. So if this is the pin, and we wanna define exactly what the pin is, I think that's, that makes sense. So I'll ask if that's because the next step would be to develop a budget around that. And I mean, it sounds like we've got a reasonable consensus on that, but I also don't wanna make assumptions that are, are not, that are not reflective of what we're thinking. I'm comfortable with it. I, I like the idea. I, the research is very clear to me. What we've heard from Nate, what we've seen in our own school, that this is the core function of a public education at, at primary level, right? Because everything. At, at primary level, right? Because everything builds on this, and if you don't have this solid, then you're, you know, then you have educational debt. And it's, I mean, we've seen it over and over and over again. I've seen it in my own kids, I've seen it in other kids, where trying to backfill is really, really, really hard. And as an education system, it's really expensive, so if we can catch them early and get them up to speed, then we're doing better by the kids, and we're doing better by that, we're doing better in our role as fiscal stewards as well.
So I would advise you that you should, you've had a good discussion on this. That as Chair Rubin, you should think or talk with the board some more right now about warning something. I'm not sure if it's a policy statement, or if it's a resolution, or a goal, that you wanna add to your board goals of, we want to make this guarantee. The strongest way to make the guarantee is have it adopted into policy. Of all those different options I just gave you, and that you, as a board, should decide whether you wanna invite other boards to take that with you, or you'd like to be leaders in that. I think there, there are a couple of.
Sounds like there's at least one other board who's
Yeah, I think there'd be more.
Strongly about this, so. I think we should try to do it together, so. I think it makes a lot of sense to not do it in.
So you can decide how you wanna, you know, you've had a reflection, most, most of the boards are having a reflection on the retreat, and it might be something that you send a communication to your fellow board members, saying, or through Stephen to the executive board to say, we would like to talk about, how do we have this discussion at the supervisory union level?
What boards have met since then?
Berlin and Calis.
Do you have a preference as to whether we filter this through the executive committee, or if?
Should it be a discussion in a carousel?
Seems like a logical place to have it, doesn't it?
Seems like that way you have all the bu- boards there, it could be with a limited amount of time that you take back to your individual ones. But for everyone to hear the same thing.
So maybe the first ask is whether the executive committee would be willing to put that on the agenda for the next carousel. And if the answer comes back as, as no, we don't have time, or, or we don't wanna do that, or whatever, then we can
Plan B.
Grassroots a little bit.
That seems like having everybody in the same room makes sense.
So I would make a suggestion, and if that's the goal, you've outreach to all the board chairs on the side. To say, this is what Eastmont Pillars is thinking, our rep to the executive committee is gonna bring it up. But if, if it's a, if it's a guarantee, and if it's a guarantee across CSU, then it no, no longer becomes a question of is there time in the carousel meeting?
Right.
Something will be cut from the carousel meeting. Very important, but it'll be cut, and time will be found to do this.
Makes sense.
And then from the executive committee and from the board, SU board chair, it, it becomes pretty clear. The district school board's chairs have communicated that this is a big priority, and we wanna deal with it. And time will be found.
I think four for the other area for that is quality. On the twenty seventh, which is the Monday before the SU board.
And just one, one next step for us as a school, I shared the Nathan's article, research, report, um, with the special educators here and asked them to read it. We meet once a month, and our first meeting is early September. So that, to bring a level of awareness to them, and just start having the conversation. Here as a school, where do they see us fitting into this, and what? You know, one example, and I think I brought it up that day, was, yes, we have reteach and we have interventions for tier two at a separate time from core instruction, but our tier three services don't necessarily do that right now. We don't have a reteach block for tier three IEP services, which is another piece that came from that report. It shouldn't be, a child gets their IEP services during literacy, for literacy, because they're still missing half the instruction, or whatever. So that's a, that is a conversation that the special educators here and I will be having, is just starting to think about, so what does that mean for us?
Okay, I will email the other board chairs in the morning. See where we go with that. Anything else on the board retreat? And thank you, that was
That was great.
I think a really productive discussion and tangible work product from that retreat, which is pretty cool. Onto three point three, trauma.
Rubin, you and I, we couldn't, the three of us couldn't remember why we had it on there, but it came off minutes, and haven't been able to really figure out.
I think that's because Brian brought up during the retreat, the screening, which was It's tomorrow. It's tomorrow, Thursday. Thursday, it's Thursday. Of resilience.
Yeah, and Kelly's working on a date right now.
We had talked about whether it made sense to piggyback with the Capstone presentation of this.
So Kelly's playing together, I know she's asked the rest of our colleagues to say, you know, what's the calendar at the schools? There are three or four dates, we picked the end of September, beginning of October.
Yeah, like we narrowed it down.
I think it has been.
September seventeenth.
I didn't stay on it, so I just let it, I ignored those emails and said, Kelly will tell me when she has a date.
Like an evening type thing?
Yes, an evening, and to, to view it, and then have roundtables discuss it.
So I'll, I'll preface this comment with saying that I can't dedicate my entire Thursday to the Capstone screaming, screening of trauma. But one of the things that jumped out at me over and over again during the retreat is the is the difference between what we do in public education and what, and part of it is that I'm chair of Capstone Community Action, and so I see the work that we do there up, not close, but from at least a policy perspective. And Head Start does wraparound services for the families. And what that means is, they take these trauma measurements and all of these other things, and they understand that you can't stabilize a child in nine percent of the day. It's not possible, and you actually have to stabilize the family. And that is something that we, it's completely outside of our orbit in public education, which means that it's like putting Band-Aids on an arterial bleed. You know, we're, we're not getting at the root of what's going on with these children that are walking in the door every day, so going back to why I prefaced this with saying that I can't go to this on Thursday, I think that there is tremendous value in more crossover in some way between these two parallel systems. Because the Head Start system gets at the kids who come from highly traumatized and difficult backgrounds, and tries very hard, with pretty decent success, to stabilize them so that when they walk in our doors here, that they're ready to learn, and and it's just, it's something that, that keeps standing out to me, which is that we have traumatized families. And that's what's walking in the door every day. It's not just traumatized kids. These are families that are living in crisis all day, every day. And I know, we can't solve this here, this has to come from ultimately, this has to come from our communities saying enough is enough. And we're prepared to do something different than what we're doing right now. And when or if that will happen, I don't know, but it's just one of those things that keeps standing out to me. In terms of, I don't know where to go with that.
So I would tell you the, the place to go to that. For me, it's at the state level, because the AHS and AOE are constantly in battle with each other. And they're battling over the same dollars, and that's what it's really about. So until.
And the policies cause them to be.
And they policies cause them to be in balance. I'm not just talking about one sixty-six, there's plenty of other instances of that. So until that, until that's forced to be solved, and we're not the only state that has that issue, there, I hear about it from our other New England colleagues. But until we really solve that issue, it's gonna be a fight for what's left of money.
Yep.
Now, that's the, one of the problems with the system we have. Just, it, it is.
Yeah, there's been.
And so I think you make, you make, you try to make inroads wherever you can, little by little.
As of right now, that viewing is at U thirty-two on the evening of September seventeenth.
But we'll get announcements out.
Yeah.
I believe we are on to work number three.
And I think for us, it's beginning to move towards bullet two, if we're trying to stay on task.
And we could ask the public for their input on the bullet number two.
Probably a good way.
I, I think it's a major problem, because I don't think even within boards, there's agreement on what community engagement is, what it means.
And I would tell you from listening to another board, I would advise you not to talk about how to do it.
Yeah, there's.
They can go down to a wormhole.
Just what it is.
Just what it is.
What it is, yeah, yeah. Cause even at the state board education, they asked that question, said, did you really have a good community engagement, and you know, soon enough, there were some people standing up saying, sure, you know, not completely respectful that they are engaged. So, so I think we, we, it's something that we have to continue to.
Right, does it mean physical presence? Does it, what does it mean?
Yeah, I, I think we, we have to do that exercise that we talked about doing last year again, you're really taking stock of what we do across all our boards. What, you know, what, you know, or how do we, everybody uses.
I would go basic four. Is community engagement getting the community to our board meetings? Or is it finding out from the community what they want the board to do? Or is it asking the community on their own to begin to do work and prioritize stuff?
Well, I, I, I think we need a little bit of both, but we want the community engaged separately from us, right? That's what we've been learning.
Attending a meeting.
Not just attending a meeting, that's what we've been learning in the different community engagement seminars that some of us have attended, and too many, we need the, the community, which is part of the reason I'm thinking that those community councils are incredibly important to talk about in governance, because that's completely separate and has nothing.
But you have to have a purpose for the engagement.
To what purpose?
If you have a PTA, or PTO, or PTNO, or any of those, the purpose is supporting your child's school, whether it's fundraising or whatever, and those people gather to run those things, that's engagement, and has a purpose.
Right, you've gotta give people a reason.
Coming to a meeting that's like this. I mean, I don't know, it seems like the only time we have community physical engagement is, the budget is rocky. We're cutting something that people have emotions about.
So one of the reflections that I had, because I had a conversation, and I can't remember for the life of me, the community member who is one of a group of folks who actually watches the Orca videos pretty much all the time, so one of the things that I realized is that we have no metrics at all for how many people watch these videos. We may have a lot more community engagement than we realize, because we've never actually looked to see what the views are.
What I started to do?
What?
What is it?
Right.
Don't, don't tell me how you do it.
No, no, I.
Tell me what you mean by it. Why? Or Lindy started to go there, why? But, but what do you mean by it when you say the words without using the word, the community or engagement?
But to me, community engagement is more about, if we want change to happen in our schools, we need to have our families engage, and the broader community engage to, you know, support the budget and support the work that is going on.
But what's the change? That depends, I mean, like, the school starting in time, that got a lot of engagement, when people thought it was going to rock their world with when you drop off kids or not. Those are the kinds of things, and I don't know that that's community engagement.
Well, floor, take care what you said. I wouldn't say that's community engagement, I'd say that's community support. And, and it is, what we mean by community engagement is that we want the support of the community on things the board's doing. I think for a lot of people, community engagement means involvement, they want the, or input. They want input from the community on this topic, or this topic. And I, I, I think the direction we need to go from our board is to say, this is what we mean when we say community engagement, and no matter what, what that is, I, I use the input example, that, you know, in, in, community engagement means to us that we receive input from at least fifty percent of the community on our proposed budget. And that's what we mean by engagement. We hear from the community on things that we're interested in. But floor, if you think of the training we went to, it's got nothing to, from that perspective, community engagement has nothing to do with the school board. Nothing. The community decides what they're gonna be engaged about.
And I have to say, as a community, when this school, and it doesn't matter what it is, has anything. It is, the engagement of the community is incredible. Whether it's the I Love Eastmont Pillars lunch, and we have firefighters, and, you know, Edie and Marty Miller, and people who have no connection to the school whatsoever, come religiously every year, or it's any sort of a public gathering.
And it's historic. It's always been that.
Hundreds of people come every time, the road is full. And, and when I think of this community and their engagement, I would say it's an incredibly engaged community.
But again, from our perspective, does community engagement mean attendance at school events? Is that what we mean by?
Or school, I mean, that's what you have, you have to decide as a board, this is your definition. Because if you look at the stuff that comes from public access, it's not necessarily about the board. If you look at the best research, the best practice research, it's not necessarily about a board or an authority figure doing it. You know, so you have to decide that, and you have to decide what you mean by that. You mean, it's fine if you say, we want it to be something with the board, but you need to make that deter, and what are you really, and where Lindy was going, why are you doing it? What are you trying to do?
But I, I think, especially because we're gonna be involved in some sort of Act forty-six again, right? Whatever that, whatever, whatever that is, and, you know, Essex, and, you know, Kim sits on the VSBA board with me, you know, it's a it is separate from the board, there's still, you know, one board member that takes part of, of the meetings, but it's it's again, it's just creating engagement around what was going on in, in Act forty-six and.
Actually, what Essex was doing was more about what their vision and mission was after they merged.
Yeah.
So why? Why do they have education? Why do they have the school system? That's what they were really looking at.
So I will use the survey as an example that I don't consider community engagement, because I felt like I still, even though we edited the questions, I still felt that they were a little bit leading, and for our community specifically, like, if you asked our community, do you wanna share debt? Do you wanna share our debt with somebody else? Who would say no? I mean, you know, so, but our question, they didn't, they said, no, I don't wanna share debt. Well, it's cause you don't realize that some of our debt would leave, potentially, right? So I don't think we, I feel like. So I don't think we, I feel like the communities, the education of the subject matter matters. So it's a, it's a give and take from, I want to hear their opinions and what they've heard from other sources and give them what we're seeing. So, to me, that's what it is. It's the give and take of hearing from them, hearing what they've heard, here, uh, hearing how they feel about it, giving our perspective and having that back and forth conversation.
But I, I think we, we have to start somewhere, right? So we have several opportunities right now, and we could start as, for now, just create an input while we get at something more advanced like what Essex has been, has been doing, but we could start in, you know, like, what we're gonna do on September 17th. The boards will watch the trauma. We, we talked about there are several community members that have been, you know, that we could let that loose. There are several members of the community that are already interested in helping.
So that's a how and a what, but it's not a why.
But again, because that will support the work that we're doing. Or, or is that in core instruction, not everybody?
Looking for, again, is, what we're really looking for is community support rather than engagement.
But if you don't have an engaged community, you're not gonna have their support.
But I think that our, without, without getting into the weeds of that, I think we, we, I think by some measures, we have very engaged community. By this particular measure, which we, it's very personal to us every month, right? Nobody comes. And so the fear is that people don't know what we're doing. And I'm less, I don't feel that fear as acutely, I guess. So it goes back to, because, because this community has a, a strong history of if we do something that they disagree with, they're instantly engaged. Right? So, so, so we know that if we do something wrong, we've got an engaged community. And so it really, again, it sort of goes back to the why. What is it that we're looking for?
See, I'm not so sure I agree with, depends on, if you do something wrong, it depends on whose opinion that is wrong, right? I mean, and that's where I'm str, I think the community engagement is important because coming in late to the Act 46 conversation, I hadn't really actually done much research to it. I hadn't really engaged with any of you on it. I, thinking about it, I, you know, like on my own, I had my opinions. I'd talked to a couple people after I got elected and had, but I don't know if the, I don't think there was enough en, engagement. I didn't, to know if the community supported our stance or not. So I don't think it's, I don't think we're looking for community support. I want, I mean, it's a little catch 22, right? Because they're electing us to, to represent them, right? So they must think we're, have like minds if they're electing us, right?
Or at least they trust our judgment.
Well, that's what I'm saying, right? That's why I'm using air quotes.
Yeah.
But I think we do need to find a way to get the feedback based on educated conversation or, and not just throw out a survey feeler and, and, because it's totally...
There's a trust that the school is being rounded up.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and then we have...
So I don't know that it's just, I don't, and, I mean, my definition of support isn't what I'm looking for when I say community engagement. I want a back and forth conversation.
And without trying to go around and around, if we are gonna try to pass some policy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right, right now, eh, there's gonna be some sacrifices, right? That we don't want them all showing up like when we lost Spanish or we lost things.
Right. Now, we wanna make sure that we have a conversation with...
So that is an opportunity that we have right now. Like, we know that, you know, later that I remember it, it's important. And this is what, so I, I think we have to start somewhere. I'm not saying that's the, but to me, that's an ob, we don't want this to be pushed back
when we present a budget. Why?
Uh, what? Yes.
Right. That's what I was getting at earlier. Like, the what and the how, we need to have a why behind it. And Bill has been waiting so patiently.
So I think you need to talk about two different definitions here in this discussion. And I think if I were an Alicia's chair, I'd be worried about school engagement. And by almost every measure I can think of, not just for Eastmont Pillar, but in Washington Central, you have high degrees of school engagement. Very high degrees. And at, in all the six schools within Washington Central, some of the highest I've seen. So I don't think you need to worry about that. You need to define what the difference is between community engagement and school engagement. And I think about this a lot because when I'm thinking, when we're at 46 and public come out, what I try to ask myself is how many people in the audience are parents? And how many are non-parents?
Well, look at our town meeting as well.
It's the same.
It's the same. It's the same. So here's, the, and, and there's myriad of reasons that you could go into why that is. If, you said something, Lindy, about change. So if you want people to change, you're not gonna get them with the how and the what. Tried many times myself and failed every time I do it. It's how you get to the why. And just talking the piece about numer and literature, until the education is provided on why literacy and numeracy are so important, people aren't gonna back that guarantee. Because they're gonna think you're taking away from my child for those extra experiences. So you have to show the statistic, for me, I'm a numbers guy. Alicia says to me, she goes, I don't know how you hold those numbers, but I can't hold letters in my head, but I can hold numbers in my head. So I remember things like 9%. But those, that's the work. If you wanna make change, is how do you get people pulled into the change process? And every time we've started with the how and the what, and we've gotten technical in Washington Central for my past six years, we usually haven't done a good job. Then when we said, so what are the possibilities or why would we wanna do this?
So maybe the why is we want community engagement as guidance when we're considering policy change. Maybe that's a starting point. Right? Because then we, when we start talking about the how and the what, we have a reference point that we can go back to. Say, we gathered this input, and we gave these opportunities for input. And, and maybe that, you know, maybe as a starting point, that's, maybe that is one. So that when we're considering policy change, we make sure that we give opportunity for, that we make opportunity for community engagement. And then we can decide what that looks like. You know, whether it's, whatever it is, open forums, it's a, right, because, because the other thing that's sort of lurking in the back of my mind, I don't know if it's in anybody else's, but generally speaking, in budget forums, unless it's a really contentious budget here, there's only a small handful of folks here. So even when we're asking for, you know, controversy is what gets people here. And one of the things that a good board tries really hard to do is keep controversy to a minimum. Controversy and turmoil tend to be something that boards avoid, for good reason. Right? You know, if, if something's gotten controversial, it often is because there have been missed opportunities or expectations met, not met along the way.
I think a good example of the first impression if somebody's coming to a board meeting, if there's a problem, when Krista, somehow we were copied, that Tammy would be here tonight. I didn't know who Tammy was.
There's Tammy.
Didn't say anything about note-taking. And I was the agenda, I'm looking at the agenda to see, is there something then here that I didn't know about? Because the answer was, I'll be there. Thank you, Krista, I'll be there. I thought, oh, is this a parent? Is this, what, what are we discussing? Didn't I?
I think Ruben suggested a pretty clear, a pretty clear cut definition of what we might mean by community engagement. And he suggested it's a start, a starting point. I don't know if you wrote it down or can remember it to say it again. With something around...
Informing us when there's a policy change or something.
So we wanted input from the community on policy changes. That's what, that's what we're seeking when we say, when we talk about community engagement. What it means is we're seeking input from the community on, and, and policy is lack of a better term, but it, it could, the policy could be any different thing, but...
Right, because we don't necessarily wanna have community engagement every time that we do a reading on whatever policy. So we'll definitely wanna...
I mean, I look at that guarantee, and I think that's what you were talking about, Ruben, it's more like goals.
Cool.
Where are the goals and aims of the board? We'd like some engagement on that. We on the right goals?
It's directional input.
Right.
Right? It's making sure that when we make some sort of a course change, this is in the back, this is what I'm thinking. Like, if our hand is on the tiller and we're gonna, all right, we're gonna move this three degrees to the right.
We aren't making the change, we're considering the change.
We're considering changing course to this direction over here. How does the community feel about that? Right? Because that is exactly in, just to beat this analogy to death, the wheelhouse of what a board that's, a governing board is supposed to do. We, we set the long-term direction. We're not down in the engine room shoveling coal. We're not doing any of that stuff. We're deciding as a group what direction it is that we're going and what we're sort of aiming at. And so we wanna make sure that we don't make big decisions like that in a vacuum. Right? That's kind of the ultimate driver in, in my summarization of this conversation. And so then we wanna make sure that we give opportunity for community feedback for when we make, when we're considering those changes. And something like this guarantee is an obvious, an obvious opportunity to ask for that input.
So could we simplify?
Okay, Flor.
Okay. But could we simplify the language for, if we're gonna attract the broader community to something that we had talked about? I was just going through the notes of other meetings of, eh, we, we had said engagement, parent and family engagement with student, for student achievement. Because if we say policy, they, you know, most, it's too, you know, most of the people that are gonna be even watching the the video are not gonna know necessarily what that policy is, right? Unless we spell it out like we were saying. So do we want them just in, well, I guess it could be any policy. So is this a broader concept? Sorry to be back and forth.
No, I'm just trying to think.
I think our definition is an internal definition. It's not outward facing.
Okay.
Community doesn't need to know our definition. But to me, and if that's the direction we go, and I would be comfortable, it now defines what it is we're trying to do.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's to get community input, then, and, and all the boards agreed on the same thing, because that still has to happen, then it allows us to focus our efforts on, okay, what are some new and creative ways we can do that? If we want more community input, we know forums and board meetings isn't getting it done. So what other things do we explore? What kind of professional development do boards need to increase the amount of input we receive from the community on things?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And to look backwards a little bit, you know, if, if we had, if we had sort of set this definition for ourselves a couple few years ago, we might have gathered input about the Tier Two supports. Because that was not a huge directional change, but that was a directional change. And in my mind, that might be something that would, you know, cross the threshold of, you know, maybe it's worth getting some community input on this. And it's an opportunity to educate the community on why we're considering this.
I would say, no, it's not. If it's to gather input, it's to gather input.
Yeah.
That's what we want.
Yeah, we have to differentiate.
We wanna hear what they say. It's got nothing to do with educating them.
No.
I do find, it's hot, you know, one of the things I feel like is my role, take the Tier Two. It's my role to educate families, right? About what that is, because it will be very hard for them and something that, that term Tier Two would mean nothing to them to give you input on if they knew nothing about.
Yeah.
Maybe not your role, but I do feel like it is somebody's role to educate.
Yeah.
No, I, I think, uh, taking us out of the role of educators on every level is probably a good idea.
I actually disagree with you on that.
But...
I actually disagree with you on that, Ruben. I think it is your job as board members to educate your community. It doesn't mean you do it by yourselves.
Mm-hmm.
But I, you are the representatives of the community. You have a two-way communication.
I, right, I guess I, I, maybe in a more formal...
And you have done that.
We have, yes.
You know, you have been educated on topics that you probably never thought you'd be educated on, that you are now able to speak of to your community.
No, that's a fair point.
Yeah. So, so if we're gonna get, eh, trained or input, which is what you were asking, you know, we, you know, we, we do want that. And I think all of the boards need more information and similar things that we attend, you and I attended that other day to decide, you know, if we're gonna be asking, we went through all of this before when we were trying to do it for Act 46, like, to decide if we want to be more proactive of what we do that day. One day it's discussing and connecting, or if it's just merely input. So try to differentiate and really understand what level of community engagement. Because we, we can never really get people over, like, people get frustrated with us if they come and we have a ready-made that, you know, like, we always got that input from you, from different people or the agenda. So, so we need to relearn that. You know, we've talked a lot about, about it in other frames. But what are we, you know, are we doing in small group? Like, there's a lot to be learned and to try to follow through. So the question is, do we wanna learn more? Eh, yes, and...
Well, I mean, if we look at what this goal outlines, Ruben will get together with the other board chairs and Matthew, and they'll come up with a written purpose and strategy. So what is it we want Ruben to carry to that meeting? Kind of what he outlined as input on, okay.
So I think we have...
So I, I don't think there's anything else, we don't even spend any more time thinking about it.
Because what, the other word we're gonna...
The chairs will get together and a decision will be made in whether we like, you know, either we're gonna support the direction that the group wants or we're gonna go our own way. Hopefully, we support the direction the group wants, and it might not be what we want. And then, th- then we start getting into the weeds on what it's gonna be.
I mean, I guess I, I, maybe I'm not quite understanding what you're, but I want to make sure that there is, from my perspective, and I'll support you guys if you don't disagree, but if you do disagree, sorry. But I do think there needs to be not just input, but back and forth. Like, I think if somebody comes in and has an opinion about something, and we need to be able to communicate that back to them because maybe their understanding of something is not what our intention is or... So I don't think it's, I just wanna make sure it's not just a one-way street.
Yeah, and that's what they will, you know, my understanding is that's what we will define. And we would learn more about, you know, in engagement, take engagement and what, how we wanna do it. And it will change depending on the issue, right? It doesn't mean that there's just gonna be one way to do it. Keep looking at Stephen to see what he thinks.
Well, that's why, I, I, just what Stephen's coming up with earlier was that if we're just getting input, we're just getting input. And I don't, from my perspective, I want, I would prefer to say back and forth.
Well, back and forth could be an important thing, but it doesn't mean it's part of community engagement. Community engagement's gonna go its own way. It doesn't mean we, we can't encourage what you're interested in. I, I mean, I would disagree. I think the worst thing we can do is have a back and forth between one community member and the board.
I'm not saying like, like, confrontational. I'm just saying if somebody... I'm not saying like, like, confrontational, I'm just saying if somebody comes in and says, you know, you painted the wall green, and I say, well, it's actually blue to me, you know? You know, I'm, I'm just, I, I feel like we need to be able to.
Well, I think it's informing. If they come and say, I understand this is being considered, I'd like more information. If it's not on our agenda, then we say, we need to look into that, and it'll be on our agenda next month, then bring your friends or whatever, I don't know, because I don't know what it is. I don't know if that's community engagement, or if that's just, I guess it is.
Well, I guess it's always dependent on how we frame the conversation, how we frame that community engagement. And by saying community engagement doesn't mean that it has to be one-way or.
And I, I think we're getting a little lost in the, how and what. I think we figured out, for, at least in broad strokes, the why. We, I think we've got sort of what it, why it is that we would want community engagement. So I will.
For information, both of you.
I will bring that to the other board chairs. Thank you for a robust discussion of board goal number three. I believe that we are on to the administration report to the board.
So, I did not do my homework. I get to say that. There's supposed to be a written report in here for myself, so I'll let Alicia go first and then tell you about some of the, she included some of what I was gonna talk about, and I'll fill in the rest. No, that's my colleague's essential office, that's, doesn't have my name on it. There's no superintendent.
You can't just like sign your name at the bottom of that.
Well, that was appreciated. That was really good to see what went on in the summer.
It was great, and I, I actually, not having it here, I feel like I spent as much, if not more, time at Berlin Summer Program. And, and it was a, it was a wonderful experience. It really was.
You had a lot of your staff members working there.
A lot, a lot of staff members. And some I sent, so I was the acting administrator for a period of time there and realized pretty quickly we were short-staffed, and sent out a plea to my staff, and it was incredible how many of them stepped up and said, sure, we'll come in, we'll work. Very proud mom, I have to say. So one of the four U32 students was my daughter, and she had an incredible experience. And she worked with Mrs. Gannon, so of course it was a great experience for her. But, so I was able to see it both as administrator and as a parent whose child was working the program. What, what was really nice, and I don't want to say, I don't want it here again, but I will say, the setup of Berlin with the library in the middle and the classrooms having it very contained. This is a long sprawling building, and it's hard to contain anything. That seemed to work very well this year. So that was great, and having a new principal there, Erin did a fabulous job of just, you know, letting the troops come in and take over the school. One thing I didn't provide to you, and I apologize, and I will email it to you this week, I wanted to give you a numbers update. Karen and I, we had two students register as late as this afternoon, so it's like really constantly changing. We haven't had many move out, but we have slightly smaller kindergarten classes, and we have quite a few Act 166 pre-K students coming here from other places, which is great. We have students from Montpelier, Berlin, various city, because our numbers were down a little, so we could take on some, some students. But I will email those to you. I told Karen before she left today in the midst of, midst of in-service, let's connect, and so I can get updated numbers.
So one of the things I've been promising every board, I know everyone's anxious, we won't give them till you, till after the fifth day of school. They're just too variable.
They're very, every day is changing.
So until, until we get to the Tuesday after Labor Day. We should have known that until she said, but you'll get them.
Our, um, the pre-K that's not Jamie, like the all-day pre-K? I don't know. The Community Connection, the one that's in the building.
Yes.
And that will take people from anywhere. Is that correct, or do they have to be Eastmont?
No, and we have been taking kids from all over. I, I don't know how many of our schools offer it, but I know a number of our schools don't offer it. So we have been taking, and we'll, just one.
There's only one, that doesn't do all day. Real sex.
So we have taken kids from other schools, maybe this year it's different, but we've taken kids from other schools for the past few years to provide, or on the off days. So we provide five-day-a-week full day, and, and maybe that's what they don't do. So even on the days where they come, they can spend the full day here, which is an attraction, and why I feel like we've gotten more calls this summer than other years, because the word is out that we offer this service.
Well, there was a person who lives in Montpelier, and I were at a meeting, and she said, I was considering that, and I said, no, you could do that. And then we talked, and I said, go for it, if it works.
We do, and we had, we have parents from other districts who come and drop their kids off in the morning and pick them up at the end of the day. And I think, I don't remember that kid, but it's because they're not a Eastmont player student, but they are here for CC. So I will get those numbers to you. I just, it's, it is constantly changing.
Smaller kindergarten classes, you say?
Right now, we have two classes of fourteen, so not, not significantly smaller, but last year we had large, we had a class of seventeen and a class of eighteen, which was pretty big for kindergarten.
Oh, but not smaller than you were anticipating? But just smaller than last year?
Yes.
For preschool or for kindergarten?
This year's kindergarten is a little bit, is smaller than last year's kindergarten.
You get the cutest.
I know, we do. Ms. Samantha's coming up. I don't know if there were any other questions, so we had an awesome day today. We had everybody here, including we had Community Connections people, kitchen staff. Everybody came, we did a, um, we have quite a few new staff members, so some ice-breaking, getting to know you, but a lot of work around the implementation plan, and just a review of where we've been, where we're going, working on our agreements as a staff, and our commitments, norm-setting. We did some work around PBIS, and just getting on the same page and planning for that. A long day, but it was, it was a great kickoff to the, a long week of in-service.
I know you read in a couple different places about the World Peace Game that was held here, that was a great week. Some of the other, there's been project-based learning, professional development that's happened with ninth, tenth grade teams at U32. We've had our usual responsive classroom and restorative practice training. And all our new staff were here all last week, pretty much. The elementary teachers from Wednesday on, because they had responsive classroom a couple weeks ahead of time. And the seven through twelve teachers were here Monday and Tuesday for restorative practices, and Wednesday through, probably expanded to three days, which still isn't enough time to do everything that needs to be done with new staff. So they were drinking from a fire hose, especially on Friday. They had, when I saw them, that morning. The other thing, we've had a, we had a great, and it's been alluded to in a couple places here, but curriculum camp, again, at the end of school, where some really whittling down of performance indicators and standards. The standards have stayed steady, but the performance indicator's really getting whittled down, so in some cases going from sixty to eighteen in literacy, to really try to get refined, and what does that mean to be proficient? At that great level. So those are some of the great things I was gonna talk about, is just all the great PD that's been done this summer. We're also in the midst of hiring for an information technology director, or coordinator, I should say. And we're in the midst of that process for Washington Central, and we're almost a full staff across the district, but not quite everywhere. If you read the Digger the past couple days, there's been talks about the teacher shortage, it's definitely true. And principals and administrator shortages are even more acute.
My wife will offer some insights on why there's administrative shortage. Amongst, in, in, I'll be quiet.
Thank you for the update. It was great, and it was nice to see the letter that was sent to the family, too, especially since
Yeah, I'm realizing less and less of you are even.
So, so it was good that you sent it, because we were not getting it.
I haven't sent out the email, just been too busy, but I'll try to send it out tonight. I know most folks, it's too late to invite people to their in-service tomorrow, but we'll be filming that, and it'll be up on YouTube for you to see both the, um, beginning, the opening of in-service, but also Dave Melnick's talk for tomorrow. So we're streaming that on YouTube, and I will have it stored up there for you, if you'd like to take a look at that.
It's at eight, right, tomorrow?
It's eight-thirty, it starts, and we're going till noon.
I believe we are on to the fiscal report.
So this is the final report from last fiscal year. The otters were in last week, and it's pretty much, um, I mean, I can answer any questions, but I know all of you know how to read these enough, really just a little bit more income. E-rate missed the end of the final year, that's why you see a down on E-rate, but that will come, it's just missed the June 30th cutoff for last year. Some of the changeovers from Sovereign at to First Light have been affecting that. We'll get that money. And then you'll see that there were some savings in special education costs, and then just closed down with the school. So you have a pretty healthy fund balance, along with the self, the set-asides that you have a board has taken for the health insurance recapture that was, you just did a year ago, based on what the legislature had done to try to capture some of the healthcare recost, and what you've reserved for technology and retirement expenses. So you're, you're at a good place at 4.8%, or $182,000. Glad to take any questions. I went, did that really quick, but you've seen, pretty much saw this in June as well.
You will see next month all of the changes from all the spring hiring. The numbers look very good.
Oh, good.
But we did a lot of hiring in the spring, so that's all, that Lori, Bill and I met last week, and it's all getting rolled up, so you'll see those numbers next month.
Executive Committee. I think I've covered it. Well, I had one thing, because Policy Committee's coming up. I think what the Executive Committee said to the, will, will be carried to the Policy Committee is, we trust and respect what the Policy Committee's doing, and you, you tell us what the priorities are and where you want to go. Is that kind of fair assessment, you think, Bill?
I think so.
We didn't, I mean, we just didn't feel like we could provide specific guidance on do this or do that. There's some discussions about policy in general at the Executive Committee level, but not necessarily work that the committee's doing. Policy Committee.
So I will tell you that these binders, we were able to take some fund balance money that was left at the end of the year in supervisor union and hire someone to come in and organize all the.
Another child?
And it's not in your policy, but in some of the board policies, it's a requirement of the superintendent to do this. So we did it across all the boards. I would ask your encouragement to help change that, because I think we did a lot of printing that maybe we shouldn't have done. But I was, and if you could help your Policy Committee member express that.
And I'll add that I think that came from, that meeting that I shared wasn't maybe the most pleasant meeting, of people wanting paper in a binder, of stuff that is not even necessarily current policies. And the discussion at that meeting, this is the result of it, I think. So we have it now, but I think it is something we need to address and talk about, whether or not any going forward. This is a necessary expense, or.
I personally would encourage you to bring that back to the policy that we find this unnecessary.
And these are combination, Washington Central and Eastmont Pelier, all in one.
So each school got a different one with their policies and.
And WCSU.
WCSU, and the, I think the charge of the Policy Committee is to try to get us on the same page, and we're, we've made good progress, I think. Because most policy, or a lot of the policy, is mandated, and the language is provided through the School Board Association. And it's already embedded through the attorneys, and I personally trust that. I mean, we read it and check it out to make sure that our culture or whatever isn't that different. So that's what, how I've been kind of trying to give my voice in the policy meetings. Because I thought our board pretty much agrees with.
I just, I just wanted to temper your statement. To, to me, this is crucial. It's just, it should be an electronic form, it shouldn't be in a paper form. And it should be a very clear site at EMES and at SU and U32.
And you will notice that the board pages, the board webpages have all been redone, both on policy and on your board resources, so that all the board resources, on the board resource page, you have a table that has the agenda, the packet, the minutes, and the Orca recording. All in one row for each meeting, and then you'll see another webpage that the policies, and they may not be totally finished at this point, but they're getting close.
Yeah, and I think, you know, for those folks who prefer a piece of paper, I don't think we want to shame them.
No, no, they can make their own binder.
So I think we can put, or if they don't have the resources to print out the 250 pages, then they can come to WCSU and get.
And for five cents a page, they can get one.
Okay. Start time committee.
So they're meeting the last, they're trying to set a meeting for the last week in August.
Well, the start.
Not me.
It happens.
They're trying to start a meeting for when?
They're trying to set a meeting for the last week in August.
That's pretty soon.
Yeah, I can't remember which of the two days, otherwise I'd say the day. I just know there's two different dates.
Did I miss an email somewhere?
No, I think it's been really Karen and Scott having that conversation.
Okay, then.
You can.
Do I have to?
No. No?
Okay. Yeah, from my perspective, as one of the school start time committee members, nothing has happened since carousel that we, that we reported out to you all on. Um, School Quality Committee.
You had the minutes there on page twenty-four. It doesn't show like I attended, but it does show that I'm asking questions, so I need to change that. But other than that, we, eh, the, we were supposed, we were supposed to meet September twentieth, but we are talking about meeting sooner than that?
No, September, that's September, that's September meeting.
Yeah.
Whatever the date is, I have to look at my.
I, sorry, I said something about August, and I was just like, yeah.
No, no, I meant to say September, but I didn't say it. I meant September.
So, so we're, we've been, you know, asking several questions. We took all the data that was given to us in October. We talked about this at our last meeting, and we went in-depth and asked more questions. We're gonna try to get a preliminary report from Bill in September, right, Bill? In October?
Preliminary report for?
For reviewing, for monitoring, so.
Yeah, Carrie and I are meeting in, early in the month to try to plan out.
What that is.
What that is.
Yeah, so, so we, we're continuing to try to narrow down what is it that we, how, how do we are more effective on monitoring? And then taking into account our, you know, that goal in, that we have, the three goals that we have, we had. We talked about, you know, what is the data, what do we want to show, you know, and having less information instead of more information, so that we could get at the point, so there's sometimes in the year that we want more, but sometimes that we just really want to narrow it down. So it, it was that, this last meeting especially, we talked about a lot of different things, so it was not as organized as our previous meeting, because we had a lot of discussion also on, you know, is the data showing us everything considered? also on, you know, is the data showing us everything, considering that we are looking at trauma, and, but we put that in the, the behavior issues, too, and then what are we missing? And then Bill gave us some good advice that we were still gonna, the data is still showing that if we're doing a good job of taking care of the behavioral issues. So, I don't know if you want to add something, Bill? I, I think we pretty much just want to narrow down how we are monitoring right now, so that we can really target and show that we're doing a good job. Especially, we're going to have that policy in the Mercy, and Mercy, we're going to have to get to what is gonna, what exactly do we want to see as a board that shows, that informs us that that is, how do we monitor that that's actually happening? And I don't think we have any specific, besides digging deep into the other data that was presented to us, we are working everything around those three common goals.
Yeah, I mean, I see, it's a, I think it's going to be a combination of the work we did with Nate, and really staying focused on student outcomes, and, and not necessarily how it gets done, just that we have, because we, every time we get that how, we forget the goal that we're trying, not forget, but we take our eye off the measuring of the goal.
So, and our job as boards is to monitor, right? So we want to figure out, look at the data and really understand what we're seeing, and what is the data showing us? So, but not, and none of us have, you know, we all have, we're trying, I think we're doing a good job, it's a really fun group, and everybody's really trying to do their best at working together, and it's all, you know, I, like I said before, I think it's one of my favorite committees, because you really get to talk about what's important.
Negotiations Committee.
I have nothing to report. There's some preliminary discussions between, like, the chairs of the negotiations, is that how we would describe?
Yeah.
There's some discussions on when things will start.
Yeah.
When's the current contract at?
End of this year, and then legislation requires that we only have a one-year contract after that.
Again?
The state legislated in the Amity Plus Bill on Act eleven that there is only one year allowed for the next negotiated agreement. They all must sunset on...
Because of health insurance?
Yeah, they all must sunset on July first, two thousand twenty.
And I am our rep, so if someone feels strongly that they would really like to be on the negotiating committee, they can talk to me.
I mean, I would want to, but I don't want to. You probably don't want to.
Do you want to see it?
Yeah, I, we need to make the motion for the...
Oh, is that what you want to see?
Can I do all three at once?
Yes. You have to give those big, big numbers.
Yes, she will, she's very good at it.
I'll make a motion to approve the board orders. One for six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Do we need a date?
Can you repeat that again?
No.
What we could do is just pass them over after we do it, and then she can just read them off.
Second one would be for two million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eleven cents. And the third would be for ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy cents.
If you get to stand up?
Yeah, good.
Lucky. I know. The million, what, if people are listening?
Right.
That's because...
Special education. We pay it to Supervisor Union, so more interest can be made than on what is costing us to borrow the money.
I just think it's important that when we're talking about the millions...
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'll wait to bring him back.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion of the board orders? All of those in favor, approving the board orders, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Thanks. That brings us to future agenda items. Anybody have anything?
Act forty-six? No, we already have those there.
God, it's placeholder.
There's placeholder.
I think you have one about guarantee of...
Guarantee.
Guarantee policy.
Board Communication. I think, also related to the guarantee.
I have a request in, is this a good time to say something?
Sure.
Whoever has time to go to the regional meeting for Washington and Orange, it's going to happen on October tenth at the high school. Stephen has been a couple of times, I guess, so...
The regional meeting of what?
Of the Vermont School Versus Association, so it's when your board members get voted and running for reelection, so I would appreciate if there's people that actually can... It's the October tenth at the high school.
I think you have to sign up for it through the Vermont School Boards Association.
Yeah.
Because I think they do a dinner, don't they?
Yes, they serve you dinner, and you... You have received an email, but it probably went unread, but, no. Sent to any. But, yeah, it's right on the website.
October tenth?
It's October tenth, which is always not a convenient day, it's Lincoln's birthday, but that day happens every year.
Get that teacher course on Wednesday nights. We aren't positive yet, but I think that's...
And I'm not saying everybody has to go, but it would be good if we have, you know, last year's meeting was pretty small. I was not running last year. The year before, there were more people, so there might be more people now that it's an election year, but not likely.
And I do believe that that brings us to agenda.